Good morning, everyone, and welcome. It's nice to have a full holiday season crowd in the room. So this time I'll ask the marshal if they'll bring the list forward. And I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session to order at this time on December the 12th, 2023. Thank you. It's a privilege to have elected officials Judge O'Connor and Sheriff Gullage in the house this morning. And it's also a privilege to have our county attorney who will bring us our invocation and lead us in the pledge to flag stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, we just come to you this morning. We thank you again for this opportunity to gather to do the people's business. Lord, we thank you for those that are on this agenda, that are here to be recognized in the great jobs that they have done. You've told us when we do stuff to do stuff as if we're doing it unto you, and these people here have certainly done that. Lord, we'd ask you to be with the various agenda items that are here. Lord, give these commissioners lay upon their hearts, lay upon their minds wisdom and direction on what you would have them do as they consider these items and think about them and vote on them this afternoon. Lord, we just ask for your guidance in their decision making so that those decisions would be completely consistent with what you would have for the people of Paulding County. Lord, we thank you in this season as we look forward to Christmas that you sent your son so that he would die for us and come to life again so that we could be with you forever. Lord, we'd ask that you would be with those families that maybe this season are experiencing Christmas alone for the first time. We'd ask that you would give them comfort, be with them, and help this to be a good season as well. Lord, we lift these things up to you. We thank you, and in your Son Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much, Jason. The minutes from the November 14th, 2023, our last meeting, the work session minutes and the November 14th board meeting minutes are available for review. They're on the table in the back. The announcements this morning include the Employee of the Month, Katie Butler with New Georgia Library, and we've got a little video here of her exciting time receiving the parking sign, right? That's what everybody wants.
She has a heart of gold. She is the front of New Georgia, so she does a lot of the front desk work. She helps the patrons the most. She's constantly helping me with all of my children's programs. She's helping set up, break down. She's helping. It doesn't matter what we ask her to do, she's consistently doing it. And sometimes we don't even have to ask her. She's been a huge asset, and our patrons are always, always giving her positive reviews. She's sweet, she's soft spoken. She's one of those people that can just, if you're feeling stressed and overwhelmed, she has this ability to bring you back. She had no idea that I had nominated her, and her face kind of said it all when she walked in the door. So it was just very, it was very rewarding for me. I would thank her for all that she does for me, for the library, for all of our staff, and for our patrons. She's just, she's constantly going above, and just thank you. Thank you for all that you do.
Those are fun, acre street. We have to keep doing those. Team, let's see, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Chief Forestry Ranger Tim Soseby and his personal response at a brush fire that we had up at Richland Creek. So Chief Pelfer, you want to say some more things about this alert fireman?
We wanted to take this time to recognize Georgia Forestry. It's been, they've been with us, been partners with us for 20 something years since I've been here, since the early 90s, and they do a fantastic job. An example of that was a brush fire they ran for us on November the 2nd up on Lucas Road. It was on county property near the Richland Reservoir. Our units responded on November the 2nd and found some heavy fire conditions. We had high fire danger that day. It was real dry, and a lot of ground cover was, the fire was spreading pretty rapidly. Forestry came up, we contacted them, they came up, and they had to go through some treacherous territory with some tractors, cut a break around that. They were trying to protect county property. You know, we got the reservoir and some homes up there, and they had come up, the tractors kept a great attitude, they went around, we had several acres involved, they cut the brakes around through there and got it stopped. They had to go back out the next day, and this is under investigation, they had to go out the next day and do some more work out there from another fire started, and then on November the 20th, they had to go back out again and do the same thing. So we had a lot of acreage burn up on the reservoir property, and if these guys wasn't there, there's no telling what kind of damage it would have done going towards the reservoir. We have a home up there, and then there's a lot of, a lot of construction going on up there. So one of the things I wanted to do, just bring them in and tell them how much we appreciate them and everything they do. They're kind of in the background, we don't get to see them much, you see guys with tractors pull up, and they go tearing out through the woods, and it is very dangerous what they do. They operate at night, and they don't know what they're getting into with rough terrain. So this is Chief Ranger Tim Soseby. I'm going to let you introduce your personnel there.
Mr. Cooper Stevens, he's a ranger two, Hope, Paulding County.
But they do fantastic, and like I said, if we didn't have them, we called them all the time when we have brush fires that we can't handle with water, and if it wasn't for them, a lot of citizens would lose some property. So y'all know how everything's going on with construction, a lot of people are burning, they get out accidentally, these fires get out, and they're always there with a great attitude, always willing to help us. So Tim, thank you to you and your staff and everything that you do. We appreciate it, and the citizens of Paulding County appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief Pelfer. I want to do a picture.
Sure.
We're going to do a picture. I'll stand right here, chief in between you. Chief, once you get the medal here, what is the circle around you? Need to celebrate these successes.
Angela.
Okay, next, we'd, Board of Commissioners would like to recognize the Paulding County Board of Assessors. A lot of them here this morning, so glad to have them in here, they do such a great job, for being awarded the 2023 GAO, that's the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, by our state overseers, and we've got some of them here this morning. So I think you've got something that you want to share with us?
Yes, please.
I don't have your names on here.
I'm Dana Birch, I'm the immediate past president, but I was the president for 2023. We've got Teresa Gooch, she is our president-elect, and then Ashley Bailey serves on the committee that actually awards this award each year. During my term as president, I was really lucky, I was the president for the 75th birthday, and then I got to honor four of my mentors that year. First off was Mary Kirkpatrick and John Scott with honorary lifetime members, then Steve Swindell with member of the year, and then lastly, Paulding County and James Stokes for Office of Excellence. James and his staff have always been on the leading edge of technology in introducing ideals in Georgia. Paulding County was the first county to sign mobile assessor, and James and his staff worked diligently getting this product fine-tuned and ready for over the 60 counties that are now using this product. James hosted meetings showing off this product in Paulding County to the state of Georgia and across the United States. So we're very proud of James, and we hope that this award says it. Next up, we've got Teresa Gooch, she would like to also say a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Teresa Gooch, I am the president-elect, and I'm also the chief appraiser of Gilmore County. Innovation is the word that I think of when it comes to the Paulding County Assessor's Office. Under the leadership of James Stokes, their office is always looking for new ways to help improve the assessment organization. There have been many times that we have called on Paulding County's Assessor's Office for guidance, whether it's for mobile assessors, commercial valuations, or simply to ask, what new features have you added to the Q public website? The Board of Assessors and the Assessor's Office always does a fantastic job with having not only an informative website, but one of the, one that demonstrates transparency to the taxpayers. I often actually visit that site myself to find new ideas for my website. So thank you, James, and Paulding County for leading the way. Next, I would like to introduce GAO Office of Excellence Committee member Ashley Bailey.
I'm the last one, I promise. As a part of the 2023 GAO Office of Excellence Committee, our task was scoring all applications submitted for this award and submitting our recommendation for the most deserving applicant to the GAO Executive Board. These applications are scored based on personnel, compliance, community engagement, best practice, office procedures, and GAO participation. Among the many extraordinary applications received by our committee, Paulding County stood out as an office that not only provides outstanding performance and service to the citizens of Paulding County, but also provides support and guidance to counties throughout the state of Georgia. I, like many others, have benefited firsthand from Paulding County's exceptional leadership in the assessment industry. Whether it be hosting a statewide webinar to help educate members on the ins and outs of a not-so-popular ratio study, or just spending time advising a young chief appraiser on which potential policies and procedures may best serve his citizens, the staff and James have always been ready to lend a hand. It is for this reason, along with their outstanding performance in all industry standards and continuous involvement and contribution to the GAO and its members, that Paulding County has been selected as the 2023 GAO Office of Excellence. So on behalf of myself, fellow committee members Suzanne Widenhouse and Amanda Panther, GAO Executive Director Ashley O'Donnell, President Kurt Donegan, President-elect Teresa Gooch, and immediate past president Dana Birch, as well as all GAO members across the state, it is our honor to present the 2023 GAO Office of Excellence Awards to Paulding County.
So we'd like James and the whole staff that are here to come up and like to get a good picture, and thank GAO officers for being here today.
We're going to hide amongst the staff. We're going to hide amongst them.
It's going to be a good picture.
Congratulations.
Is y'all staying here by me?
I'm going to get them in.
That's okay. You're the important ones today.
Let's turn in.
James.
Congratulations.
How are you?
And our staff.
As James is going to the podium to say a few words also, I've gotten to know James a lot better this year. He drove me through a 30-minute thunderstorm down Interstate 16. The longest period of thunder showers that I've ever been in. I had my eyes closed most of the time, James, didn't I?
I do appreciate the GAO recognizing our office. We've always strived to do the best that we can for the citizens of Paulding County. I know not everyone has been lucky enough to back into this industry, so with all the grief that we take from day to day to be recognized for the good that we do, and not only for our citizens, but for the state as a whole, this isn't just me. This is all of the staff members from the team that are serving our customers at the counters, to knocking on people's doors, to processing deeds. It is a team effort, and every one of us contribute to making our office the best that we can. So I do appreciate GAO for being honored this year, and I appreciate the commissioners for taking time to let us be recognized. Thank you.
Would you take a couple more minutes and introduce your board?
Sure, I've got, some of our board members are here. We have Reverend Johnny McBurroughs, he is our chairman. We have Mr. Gary, Mr. Gary Griswold, he is on our board. Ms. Lydia Rollins, and then Ben Amerson and Gary Spinks weren't able to make it. So without that, the board, you know, they have to make a lot of tough decisions that people always don't understand, but behind every decision that we make and the board makes, there's a law or some kind of government red tape behind their decision. So they do, they do have a hard job. So thank you.
Thank you. Now, the Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Detention Officer Michelle Mason with the sheriff's office. And Michelle, if you'd come up along with Sheriff Gullage, and following him, I'll read the certification.
Good morning, guys and ladies. Come on up in the middle there, Michelle, we won't bite you. I've got a letter here, this is Detention Officer Michelle Mason, her nominee for the Paulding County Public Safety Award for assistance on a domestic battery call. On October the 5th, 2023, officer was dispatched to a call where a suspect was violating a non-expiring out-of-state protective order. The suspect showed up at a school bus stop near the residence where the victims were walking home and a physical altercation occurred. Detention Officer Mason was outside near the intersection, witnessed the assault occurring, and immediately acted, selflessly placing herself in danger to stop any more crimes from being committed. Officer Mason made it clear to the suspect that the victim now had help and was not alone. The actions of her presence to protect others caused the suspect to retreat to his vehicle. Officer Mason then walked the victim and the children back to their residence and remained on scene to ensure their safety until law enforcement and EMS personnel arrived. The officers that talked with the children on scene stated that it was not until Officer Mason intervened that the suspect stopped attacking them. I commend the actions Officer Michelle Mason who selflessly acted to prevent further injuries being inflicted upon the victim and ensuring the safety of the children involved. Detention Officer's action is just one of the many compassionate and unselfish characteristics that make a good citizen of this county and a remarkable employee of the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. Thank you. Also, I want to, I'd also like to thank Texas Roadhouse, they give you a coupon here for dinner for two, so me and you can go anytime you want to go, all right? Or somebody else.
The Board of Commissioners would like to add to that with this Public Safety Appreciation Award that's just presented to Michelle Mason in recognition of outstanding service to her community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners this 12th day of December 2023, and we've all signed it. Michelle, this looks good in a picture. Congratulations. Everybody's definitely in the spirit now. We don't have any invited guests this morning. We've got several bid awards. Item two is to award the Mud Green Culvert Replacement Project to the lowest reliable bidder, which is Precision 2000 Incorporated, in the amount of $812,021.60. Funds for the project will be allocated from the general funds, projects located in post two, Sandy's Post, and Mr. Jones to tell us some more.
Morning. Paulding County Finance Department advertised the DOT's contract known as the Mud Green Culvert Replacement Project. This project consists of installing a three-span aluminum arch culvert over Mud Creek in place of existing undersized and deteriorating corrugated metal pipe crossings. Three additional metal pipe crossings in this area will be replaced with reinforced concrete pipe in existing locations adjacent to the arch culvert project. Temporary vehicular turnarounds will be built on each end of the project limits in order to close the roadway in the project area and help expedite construction. The aluminum arch culverts were purchased separately in order to accelerate delivery and reduce costs. Five bids for this project were received and opened on November 20th. DOT staff reviewed the five bids and recommends award to the lowest reliable bidder, Precision 2000, in the amount of $812,021.60. The low bid was in line with the county estimate. Funding for this will be provided from general funds, and as you said, the project's located in post two. There's a one-year timeframe to complete this project. It will not take nearly that long to do, however, we want to make sure to give a timeframe where we didn't want to pay more for accelerated construction, so.
Any questions for Mr. Jones on item two? We'll move to item three, which is to approve the contract with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $427,992. This is for the Paulding County Major Corridor Study 2024. The funding for this contract will be allocated from SPOS, Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Funds. Mr. Jones?
On August 18th, 2023, the county issued a request for proposals. We're soliciting qualified-based proposals exhibiting the expertise to provide transportation planning, engineering consulting services for a countywide, high-level, major corridors analysis, particularly interested in roads with a functional classification of arterial and collector. The purpose is to determine areas where existing and future corridors are required to be constructed or improved to provide adequate level of service for the 20-year Paulding County is consistently ranked as one of the highest-growing counties in Georgia by population over the past 25 years. I believe the last data looked at, we were number three in terms of population growth within the whole state by number. With this growth, obviously, the transportation system has struggled to keep up and provide an adequate level of service. The county population is expected to exceed 250,000 by year 2050. Five consulting firms provided proposals for consideration. The selection committee shortlisted three firms for interviews and presentations. After this process, the selection committee selected Kimley Horn and Associates as the team most qualified to complete the major corridor study. Essentially, the services provided will be, you know, provide the development of concepts based on feasibility and operations for roadway expansion, intersection improvements, and looking at improving safety and mobility for all users. Requesting the Board of Commissioners to authorize the chairman to enter a contract with Kimley Horn in the amount of $427,992 for the major corridor study. The project will be funded by SPOS. Essentially, we're trying to analytically determine and prioritize transportation improvements along corridors.
My question would be the interrelationship between GDOT and the incorporation here of Kimley Horn and Associates, do they have any overlap?
I think in this study, we are going to look, obviously, at all roads in the county, the GDOT corridors. Luckily, many of the corridors on GDOT are already programmed with widening capacity projects. Hopefully, those go according to schedule, like we know Highway 92, we have Highway 61 that is going to be let for construction at some point. We obviously have Highway 360, which is ongoing now. So we're going to look at that in terms of what the future traffic is and possibly, you know, is it going to be acceptable, or would it be needed to widen? So we're going to look at it comprehensively, absolutely. Obviously, we don't have control in terms of making those projects happen. However, we do have a good relationship with the district and the state. As you all know, that we did a State Route 6, US 278 scoping study that was completed early this year, and those recommendations were given to GDOT. They were in full agreement with the study and the need. So again, we're hoping that the information that comes out of this study will inform and also provide solutions and pathways to program future projects.
George, could you give a definition or explain arterial or collector road, or maybe even examples of some of the roads you're talking about?
Absolutely. Yeah, when I'm talking about, there's basically three different types of roadways. They're considered arterials, collectors, and local roads. You know, local roads, they, you know, connect like to your house, you know, let's say, High Shoals Road is a local road. They bring you out to maybe more of a road that takes you from village to village, you know. Ivy Gullage, or Gullage, is a collector road. Harmony Grove Church Road is considered a collector road. It goes from 61 back towards Cedar Crest. Dallas-Aquethrough Highway, Cedar Crest Road, those are arterial roads. They take you from like one end of the county, intra-county, sometimes inter-county, but to major destinations like, you know, Dallas-Aquethrough Highway. Highway 92 is also a arterial roadway. So just basically, the higher level, they provide a typically a higher speed, more traffic on them, and as you get towards a local road, it's a lower speed, more access driveways off the roadway. I don't know if that was a great explanation, but hopefully adequate.
How about your own staff? How do they get integrated with Kimley Horn?
Obviously, staff has had a major input on developing the parameters, what we asked for this study. We have a great staff. I mean, we're short staff, but the staff we have are extremely knowledgeable. They helped prepare this RFP, overlooked it, asked questions. So we obviously are, we're all heavily invested in terms of this study. We believe it's a great study, we think it's needed. Again, when you have the amount of people, the amount of roads that we have, we have to analytically look at things and try to prioritize as best as we can. We don't have the money to simply construct everything. We have to take that as funds and put it where it's most needed, and we feel that this study will help with that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones, appreciate it. Item four is to award the purchase of fuel utilizing the Sourcewell Contract to Mansfield Oil for a one-year contract with annual renewals. Ms. Pollard to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a necessary evil, I guess. We all have to have fuel. So in the past, we have purchased fuel, we've partnered with the school board and the state to purchase our fuel off the state contract. The state contract is expiring December 31st, there's not another contract to replace it. But Sourcewell has a contract, and fortunately, the same provider from the state contract is now on the Sourcewell contract. So that might be why there's not a state contract. The proposal that we have received from Mansfield Oil is they will, there's a 2% add-on that is removed from this contract as opposed to the state contract, so it's 2% lower. However, the delivery cost is just a little bit higher. Net the two, they're, the proposal for this one is a little bit less. In comparison, I did take an invoice from November and had it calculated on the new contract, and there's about three, it's about $300 less for that particular invoice on this new contract. So unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Tabitha? Any questions for Tabitha? Thank you, ma'am. We're fortunate to have Sheriff Gary Gullage to bring us up to date, as we always look forward to. So Sheriff Gullage, you want to let us know all these numbers?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank y'all again for allowing me to speak, give you the share of support from the Sheriff's Office from January to November 2023. Sheriff's Office patrol 2,494,618 miles, total arrests, it was 2,267. We answered 45,316 complaints, performed 3,942 traffic stops, issued 1,492 traffic citations, high-volume calls with 3,600 alarms, 5,133 domestics, served 9,683 subpoenas and civil papers, conducted 5,900 transports. We had 6,203 suspicious incidents, 124 burglaries, 1,184 thefts, potagians, and internet autos. Internet autos continues to be a big problem in every community in the nation. So if I can give a quick commercial on that, take your valuables, save your car tonight and lock your car, or if you have a garage, put your good stuff inside and throw your junk away. Most people have a garage, can't get their car in there, but they got $10 worth of stuff stacked up in there. We had 58 DUIs, 3,921 warrants were cleared, 179 zone patrols raided. We had 1,736 juvenile incident reports and 692 juveniles charged. I don't know if you'd allow me, but can I have about 30 seconds for a short commercial?
At least 35 seconds.
I just want to thank the community. This past Saturday, we had our annual, our 25th anniversary of our Shop with a Cop program that we do over at Walmart. We served about 225, 230 kids. We spent a little over $50,000 on them. This community has always been wonderful about supporting this program. It's a 501(c)(3) to Paulding County Sheriff's Cops for Kids Program. If you want to make any donations, I know it's the end of year, and a lot of people are looking for a way to get a tax donation. We'll be glad to take your money. Every bit of it goes to kids, none of it goes to anybody other than the kids for Christmas. Sometimes we'll find a needy family that's needing food and stuff like that. We'll step outside the normal and do that, but I want to thank all of our employees and some of the county employees that showed up. Without all of them volunteering their time and showing up, it just, it would not be the same. But I just want to take a minute to thank all of them and ask to thank the public and ask them to continue to support this program because it's near and dear to our hearts. It's a, it's a good program. Everybody says, well, I'm sure there's some gets through that shouldn't be any. And I said, well, that's probably so. It's hard to get them all out. We do a real good job at vetting these people. Does some get in? Probably do, but that's not, that's not on us. That's on the parents that does this kind of thing. I don't even want to get into that part of it, but the kids, it really deserves this. We have a great time with them. We give them some interaction. They get to go spend a little bit of time with us, and we take them shopping, buying some stuff for Christmas. It gives them some positive interaction with the sheriff's deputies in a different officer. We had a harem Dallas State Patrol, community probation. Everybody shows up and helps with this, and it's a great program. The marshal's office is there. I'm going to forget somebody when I started. I shouldn't have done it, but no, some of the commissioners there, I've seen several county employees that was there and didn't have a clue what was going on. And finally, I seen one park his buggy and go, went and shopping with one of the kids, and he got the cash register, and he was pulling out his credit card. I'm going, we got the bill, just thank you for going with us. So he was impressed with what was going on. But thank y'all for allowing me to do that, and I appreciate y'all and y'all's support.
Thank you. What makes this time of year so rich? Under public participation, we don't have anyone that's signed up on our sheet here. The consent agenda, required to read, consideration of these following items. Item five is to approve the funds for the first year of 60-month contract with Flock Safety LPR Products, which will allow all current and additional LPR cameras to be included under one billing cycle for the sheriff's office at the cost of $95,000, $95,000 per year. So item six is to authorize the chairman to approve and execute in the form substantially similar, the contract agreement for acquisition of a right-of-way with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Cedar Crest Road widening project from Harmony Grove Church Road to the Cobb County Line. So GDOT product number PI number 0013700. Federal funding was previously secured with the Atlanta Regional Commission to fund 80% of the project, with 20% coming from our SPOS funds for a total of $7 million. This project's located in post one and also in post four. Would any of the commissioners like to move either of these two consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing none, we'll leave them on the consent agenda. We have no old business this morning. Under new business, item seven is discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve and execute in the form substantially similar, the construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of $1,465,017.53 for the Burnt Hickory Road at Stout Parkway and Brownsville Extension Roundabout Project. The GDOT number is PI number 0016122. Project's located in post three, Commissioner Galloway's post, but you'll let us vote for it this afternoon, right? So Mr. Jones, would you fill us in on what we need to know further?
Certainly, it'd be my pleasure. The Board of Commissioners approved awarding a construction project to ER SNL at the November 14, 2023 BOC meeting. This was for the construction of a single-lane roundabout at the intersection of Burnt Hickory Road, Stout Parkway, and Brownsville Extension. The project is located in the Cobb-Paulding line with the Paulding County portion of the project, as you stated, in post three. Through GDOT, the county was awarded $1,465,017.53 in federal funds towards the construction of this project. With the federal funding, the county is required to follow the Georgia Department of Transportation Plan Development Process, otherwise known as the PDP. The PDP sets forth the current procedures and steps necessary for GDOT to administer federal aid projects in accordance with the policies and objectives of the federal government. GDOT did review the bid and concurred with awarding the project to ER SNL. Prior to receiving a construction notice to proceed from GDOT, a construction agreement is required to be executed between the county and GDOT. The construction agreement provides language on the respective responsibilities of the county and GDOT prior to the construction, such as the scope of work, insurance, claims and liability, et cetera. So we're asking the board to authorize the chairman to approve and execute in a form substantially similar, the construction agreement with GDOT, in the amount of $1,465,017.53 for the roundabout project, Georgia DOT PI number 0016122. And when we say in a form substantially similar, as you know, we're receiving a lot of documents that are signed electronically now, so we're using the term substantially similar because this will be done electronically.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
I have a comment. George is so thorough that he gave us a huge book to read for backup over the weekend. Thank you, George, for your book.
I want to make sure people is busy as I am, so.
Well, you made sure of that.
How much did the autographed copy cost?
Ask George.
They're comped, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll be ready. So while they're building this project, is there going to be, like, are people going to have to take a different road, or is there going to be a way around the construction for people to actually get through that intersection?
Right now, there's no, there's no off-site detour shown. It's going to be built on alignment. There obviously, there's going to probably be lane closures at times and such, but no, there's, there's no off-site detour.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Jones has number eight also, which is discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve and execute the application for the GDOT FY fiscal year 2024 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant. We call it LMIG, in the amount of $2,155,738.95, and the required 30% match funds of $646,721.68, which will be allotted from our general funds, the project's located in post two. And what are you going to tell us about that one, George?
I'll give you a little backup. The LMIG program is funded from the state motorfield tax collection. The LMIG grants each city-county that is eligible to apply is formula-based, taking into account your population and number of mileage, your maintained road mileage versus the state population and the public maintained road mileage. Paulding County, based on the current formula, will receive $2,155,738.95 in the LMIG funding. By law, the county is required to provide a 30% match to receive the LMIG funds, which equals $646,721.68. This is an 8% increase from the previous year FY 2023 award. Our match funds are requested to come from general funds. We do plan on utilizing the LMIG for road paving. To receive the funds and send in the application, we have to provide a project list, cost estimate, and anticipated let date, which we prepared. The project list consists of two roads, total of 5.3 miles in post two, Gold Mine Road and Holly Springs Road. We're not held to this list by GDOT. We can add omit roads if necessary. However, we do have to provide this project list upfront. We are required to return the application to GDOT by February 1, 2024. Obviously, this LMIG is very beneficial to county to provide $2 million plus in funding. It's, it's very well appreciated, and we would request the board consider to approving, authorizing the chairman to sign the LMIG application.
George, would you refresh me? I know the rest of the board probably already knows, but how do they come up with the amount? Is it population-based, road miles?
Absolutely. It's based on the population of Paulding County and the number of road miles that Paulding County maintains versus the population of the entire state of Georgia and the number of public road miles in the state of Georgia. Same for the cities. You would, if it was a city, you would look at the number of miles that the city maintains versus their, in their population versus the entire state and the population and mileage. So obviously, counties that have a lot of road miles, a lot of population, they get more money. Counties with less population, less road miles, receive less money. It does not take into account private roads in that formula.
Can we give them about 1,000 miles?
Yes, sir. About just roughly 1,000 miles of county-owned roads.
Any other questions for George? Well, the next one, we've got a duo to report. Item nine says discuss action to approve the Atlanta Gaslight Company encroachment and reimbursement agreement in the estimated amount of $376,292, and authorize the chairman to execute the same. Located in post four, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Wooton are the experts.
Commissioners.
Oh, this, Mr. Phillips.
This, Mr. Phillips. If you've got a weighted blanket on your Christmas list, this item's similar to it, except it's more expensive, a lot heavier, and a lot colder. What this is, is a concrete blanket. Out at the reservoir, when the reservoir is at full pool, there are portions of the southernmost extensions of the reservoir where the water level covers an Atlanta gas line, pipeline. And because that pipeline is in an easement, it's been in existence since the 1940s, Paulding County, in order to continue reservoir operations out there, needs to make sure that we make protective measures to protect their pipeline. So what this will involve, when the pipeline is submerged, we want to make sure that that pipeline doesn't start moving because of any buoyancy issues. So this device is a, what's been described to me as a concrete blanket, which will be laid over the top of the pipeline and prevent it from, prevent it from having any movement caused by the buoyancy created by the water over the top. We have been in discussions with Atlanta Gaslight for a very long time to get this achieved. We've had some outside help through our representatives to help move this along, and so we are hoping that we are at the point now with the execution of this agreement that we can get this job done, Ray, hopefully in the weeks to come, hopefully middle of, maybe even next week, as far as I know. And if you have any updates on that, Ray, please feel free.
Yeah. Good morning.
And if I've done it any engineering injustice in my description, please correct me.
Wonderful description. We're excited. We have talked to the construction crews that are going to be doing the work. We got a phone number. Thank you, Commissioner Stover. But we spoke with AGL crews. The main guy doing the construction went out and actually evaluated the lines before we actually received the encroachment agreement. They were going to start the first couple of weeks. We're at a point now, we're looking every day for them to get on site. They're just trying to demobilize, finish one site. We're waiting for them to show up any day now. And, you know, they are excited about getting this done as much as we are, I believe. But thank you for your participation in helping Jason get movement from AGL to get this executed.
I'll thank both of you. Any questions? Let's move along to item 10, which is discuss action to adopt ordinance 23-12, amending Article 5 of the Development Regulations of Paulding County, Georgia. And this is for the following sections, 5.3.3, which is project access improvements, single-family detached, single-family attached, and duplex residential subdivisions, which is 5.3.4, project access improvements, multifamily and non-residential developments. So I guess it's located in, located in the manual 5.15.9, turning lanes at intersections. Mr. Jones?
This agenda item is to amend Article 5 of the Development Regulations in regards to requirements for right and left turn lanes for new streets and developments. The amendment provides numerical criteria for the warranting of left and right turn lanes. The county higher trans systems provide a technical guideline for the warranting of left and right turn lanes, looking at other local jurisdiction, or the local and regional jurisdiction policies for comparison. After research, trans systems recommended a policy that was substantially similar to the Georgia Department of Transportation policy for requirements and design of right and left turn lanes. Staff worked with trans systems to fine-tune the policy to best suit the county's needs. The Development Regulation sections for the amendment changes are 5.3.3, project access improvements, single-family detached, single-family attached, and duplex residential, section 5.3.4, project access improvements, multifamily and non-residential developments, and 5.15.9, turning lanes at intersections. We feel this updated language, again, it provides definitive numerical criteria, is clear, and we feel also just better served of the Board of Commissioners. This amendment should reduce the number of waiver requests that we receive for right and left turn lanes. That's the majority of requests that we actually have been receiving over the last couple of years. Takes a lot of staff time, takes a lot of department head time, and as I said, we just appreciate the board considering adopting this update.
What's the source of the changed language?
It borrows heavily from the Georgia Department of Transportation. You know, again, the Development Regulations were, I believe, 1999 when they were originally wrote, and as time has gone along, we've seen things that needed to be amended, and we've changed them, and some things haven't been, but they will be. But we feel that this particular language, there really was nothing in terms of left and right turn lanes. It just said, you shall install it no matter what the traffic was or what size. So again, I just feel like having some numerical criteria, along obviously with engineering judgment comes into play too, you know, just strictly look at numbers. I think will just be a better way to determine the needs and requirements for these lanes on county jurisdictional roads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? That's the conclusion of regular business. So public participation on non-agenda items, no one has signed up. Commissioners, have any announcements, celebrations they want to tell us about?
I would like to congratulate Sergeant Kevin Dutton of the Paulding County Sheriff's Department. He was only the second in Paulding in completing the requirements. He was only the second in Paulding in completing the requirements to become Georgia POSD certified Level 4 Master Instructor. And from what I understand, that is pretty huge. So he's only the second one that has completed it. It takes about five years to complete, and congratulations to him on doing that.
That's a great announcement. Anyone else?
Can I do one more?
Sure. Sure.
I want to thank George and Erica. We've got a big announcement coming up in the western part of the county. George? Erica, you want to speak to it? One of you? Come on, quick. We've got a roundabout coming on Buchanan Highway at Rosa's Store. We've been waiting on this for at least five years now, and it's finally coming. So thank you to George and Erica and staff.
Tabitha Pollard has to drive home that, that way every day.
I have a feeling, I have a feeling the one sitting in the traffic while the construction's being done is not going to be as exciting as you are. It's going to be awful.
But when it's done.
No, I'm excited that it's being done, but whoo, it is, it's a much-needed project, for sure it is.
Forty-five minutes in line?
Well, our county manager said we don't have to have an executive session because it's almost Christmas. Does the county manager have any announcements?
You might find this surprising, Mr. Chairman, but I don't have anything today. But I appreciate you asking.
Well, you got a good laugh out of the audience there, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Caker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Galloway, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.